Thank you.
Okay, right, welcome everyone to our Youth Adult Council meeting is June 1st. I'm gonna start with present with Mr. White, he's gonna present to us a brief presentation on Portrait of a Graduate. And after his presentation piece, we'll move forward with our agenda items for the rest of the meeting for our June 1st meeting.
Thank you, thank you so very much for having me at your meeting. It's been a long time since I've been to to one of these meetings as a representative of Bloomfield Public Schools. But good to see you all's faces, just wanna share a little bit with you about an initiative that Bloomfield Public Schools is undertaking. And that we're very, very excited about. Mrs. Thompson is actually on the the committee, the Portrait of a Graduate Design Team. And so tonight, I just wanna share a little bit with you from a PowerPoint that we've created to just share with the community more about what the Portrait of a Graduate is. And ultimately, in a nutshell, what it is, is trying to imagine what our students are gonna need to know and be able to do, what habits of mind that they're gonna need in order to be successful in the future. And backwards mapping that all the way to pre-K. And so we provide our students with certain experiences and provide them with the curriculum that they need in pre-K all the way through 12, then the goal is to have students graduate and be not only able to survive, but thrive in the future. So I'm gonna start by trying to share my screen. All right, please let me know if you can see it, just give me a thumbs up if you can see it. All right, great, great. So we start off our presentation with a message from our superintendent. And I'm not gonna read to readers, however, I will say that the main three points that we'd like to drive home today are the questions about what are the hopes and dreams that our community has for our young people? What are the academic skills and habits of mind that our children need for success? And what are the implications for learning experiences that we provide in our schools? And you all will have the opportunity to weigh in on that a little bit later as well. So our purpose is to engage our larger community in developing a collective vision of the Portrait of a Graduate to ensure that students are fully equipped with the core academic knowledge and competencies to be successful in education, work, and life. We've already established a design team that is representative of our community. And we are also holding public forums like this one. The payoff is that we're gonna ensure that our graduates are college and career ready and equipped with the necessary 21st century competencies. So this is just the mission and vision of Bloomfield Public Schools. Those of you who have been around Bloomfield Public Schools know this very, very well. One thing that I like to harp on when we talk about our vision and our mission is, you know, the words academically, socially, emotionally, and technologically. If you rearrange the first letters of those words, they spell out the word seat, right? Seat. And so what we want our students to do is be able to have a seat at the table and to be able to make decisions in their community and beyond. You also should know our four district priorities, which are holistic accountability, rigorous curriculum instruction and assessment, positive school climate, and family and community engagement. So work that we've already done with regard to the Portrait of a Graduate is we've done a Portrait of a Graduate self-assessment with the Connecticut Center for School Change. And this is a consulting group that really consults with districts all over the country. And I have to say that they're really, really good with what they do. They're stellar, a gentleman by the name of Mike Lemmons is is well-known all over the country, and he is a real educator, not just someone who scouts, you know, data, but he is a real educator. We've also had a leadership conference with Farmington Public Schools. They have been steeped in this work for a number of years now. We've had training sessions and then, of course, created the mission and the vision. Our timeline. We started the plan in February. We started to activate and engage community stakeholders in March. We started to create the the plan in April. The plan was adopted by the team in May. And in June, as a matter of fact, next week, we should be reporting to the Board of Ed. And you will see we've been engaged in some video production and all of this stuff. And that will be shared at our at our next board meeting. The key steps. Again, you've already seen plan, activate, create, and adopt. Sorry, if you can hear water in the background, mom is getting the the girls ready for their bathroom. Not too much information, but it's okay, I'm on camera, I know, being recorded. So again, we want to give our students a seat at the table. And so we also wanna give you a seat at the table. And so you'll engage in a survey later on in this presentation as well as have opportunities for virtual workshops like these, Zoom meetings, roundtable discussions, and as well district meetings. We plan a summer retreat this summer. And we continue to have leadership meetings as well as Portrait of a Graduate Design Team meetings regularly. As you can see, this is a meeting that we had with some local business stakeholders. And it says the root of the Portrait of a Graduate process is is really steeped in the community. And so we have brought together a broad array of stakeholders to help us to co-create this Portrait of a Graduate. Also, your input later on will be will be valuable and instrumental in this process.
Am I the only one who now has a blank screen?
Uh-oh. Does does everyone?
I can still see it.
I can see it.
Yeah, so so can I?
Yeah, I can still see it.
All right.
Okay, we're just trying to make sure I didn't do anything incorrectly.
I may have to go out and come back in.
No problem. Oh, look at that guy. It's Officer Wilkins, right in our presentation. Did you know you were gonna be shown all over Bloomfield?
I didn't, but you know, you gotta pay me for that photo.
Hey, you gotta talk to the, you know, financial officer, I have no, no, you know.
I'm back.
So we wanna transform the educational experience for all students, equip them with the knowledge and skills that they need for jobs in the future. And advisory groups have a strong representation from town-based partners, nonprofit stakeholders, corporate and business leaders, faith-based organizations, as well as institutes of higher education. You wanna take a picture of yourself? You ever hear that song, "You're solving"? Bet you did, so, okay, here we go. So again, there there are multiple representatives from all of our stakeholders, including families, students, community members, and as well business leaders. At the high school, and I'm pretty sure at Global Experience Magnus School, and actually every school all the way down to Metacoma, no, I'm sorry, to Carmine Ries Intermediate has taken a survey, so our students have had input in terms of what what they feel that the jobs of the future will entail, right? I mean, who would have known five years ago that people would be making a full-fledged living and a good living off of making YouTube videos? You know, or who would have known that folks would be able to, you know, design computer programs 20 years ago and and, you know, make be be millionaires, you know, off of off of that type of stuff? So who better to ask than our students? One of the things that we highlighted even as we have been presenting is that our pre-K students will be the graduates of like 2034, 2035. And so we need to think with them in mind and and think about what they are gonna have to know how to do. So we need to treat the Portrait of a Graduate just as the beginning of the journey. Leading the district on a continuous journey, transforming to transforming opportunities for all students. Aligning our curriculum to foster 21st century skills, mindsets, and literacies, shifting the role of educators and providing 21st century learning. We know that learning even as of this past year has looked very, very different than it has traditionally. And so we need to think about what is learning of the future going to look like? What technology is gonna need to be in place in order for our students to thrive in the future? We also need to design learning experiences to allow students to use technology and connect to a wider world, produce meaningful work, and enrich the enrich the experiences which they engage in. And then build resiliency by embracing assessment as learning, right? And so not just looking at it as another task, but looking at whatever type of assessment as an opportunity to learn. So here's here's your first set of questions that that we want you to answer. I'm going to put something in the chat, and I want you to answer these three questions. All right, let's see if I can do this. All right, give me a thumbs up if you see this link come across the screen. Excellent, all right. So the first three questions are what are the hopes and dreams that our community has for our young people? What are the academic skills and habits of mind our children need for success? And what are the implications for learning experiences that we provide in our schools? And by that third question, because a lot of folks have questions about that third question, and that means like what what do we need to do, right? What are, how do our learning experiences need to change in order to prepare our students for for the next for the next generation, right? Or for the future? What are some learning implications for the learning experiences that we provide in our schools? So I'm gonna give you seven minutes to answer that question. Those questions.
Do you want it verbally or in the chat?
And actually, when you click that link, there should be a survey that opens up. And and when you all answer them in that survey, we have all of that data in the backend.
Okay.
Good question.
Roger, were you able to access that link in the chat?
I think I just sent to the chat Tiffany, did it not come through?
Yeah, we clicked on the link and then you put your responses in there, not in the actual chat. Are you able to do that?
I can't find the link. It was there initially, but now I'm not finding it.
You know what, I can I can repost it, because it may be, I know you went out and came back in, so maybe that's it, let me see.
Okay, now I see it.
Excellent, so can you click on it?
Yep.
And it should open up to another document.
Well, actually, it opens up to the chat. So my chat shows from Jay White to everyone, and then the link, so let me hit the link again to see what happens. And that may be better, no, okay. Is the first question, "I am a..."
Yes, yep.
Okay, all right.
And you all would put business slash nonprofit, or you could say resident of the town of Bloomfield, or in some cases.
I put in resident.
You might even have a child who or children who, you know, have gone through Bloomfield Public Schools and done very well, I'm just saying.
There was an option for a town council member.
Absolutely, whatever you whatever you associate with. For sure. I'm not sure if you all hear my chimes, but that means that you ran out of time. Please don't make me spit this rhyme. I'm just saying you ran out of time. All right, so if we had more more time, you know, we would actually go through some of these some of these responses. And, you know, Ms. Thompson is is more than welcome to to do that. However, let's continue. So but don't think you're off the hook, you're actually gonna have to take another survey. All right, and this one talks about the competencies that we want our students to have, right? So here there are 30 competencies that are listed. And what we'd like for you to do in another survey is select 15 of those. And then from those, that's where we are going to sort of develop our our final 15 for the Portrait of a Graduate. So let me put the next link in the chat. And this one is a little bit different, because when you open it, it should have a link at the very top. All right, give me a thumbs up if you got it. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, so when you click on this one, and I'll actually do it as well. At the top, it should say, "Please submit your responses on this form." And actually, under are like the descriptions for each of those competencies. And so for this one, you're gonna select 15, and I'm gonna give you five minutes for this one, all right? Five minutes, starting now.
I don't know, I'm not there.
Don't worry, Mr. Bunker, we will give you a little bit more time.
Well, I'm not there, I've got I've got, thank you for completing the survey.
Okay, so that was that was the the first one that you completed?
Yeah, the first three questions.
All right, so let me I'm gonna repost the second second survey.
All right, thank you.
No, no problem at all. Did it come up for you?
No, I was, nothing's changed.
Not yet. Are you looking in the chat?
I don't, the chats no one, I mean, my my whole screen has changed, it's blank. Well, it's not entirely blank, it's got some white and gray. I have no pictures, no, no, no video of the participants.
Okay, so that may be your your computer again.
Okay.
You wanna click, maybe you could click refresh. It looks like a little circle with like an arrow in a circle in your browser, in your web browser, so top left-hand corner of your web browser.
Okay, yeah, I see it. Okay, now I'm back to "I am a..."
Okay.
Yeah, I'm having the same issue, sorry.
If I go down the bottom and and push, hit the right, the the arrow, will that take me in the right direction? Or will it just take me back to the survey?
Let me, let me do this. Okay, copy this, let me try this one. Okay, so a new link should have just popped up in your chat. And let me know when you click that, what you what you see.
Mr. White, is it the Google Drive one that's giving us the list with the?
Yes, it should say, it should say Portrait of a Graduate. And then at the top of that page, it should say responses.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, okay, hang on.
Okay, I'm all set now, thank you.
All right, and just for everyone, I'm gonna reset that timer to five more minutes, because
Okay, I need it.
Now, Mr. Bunker, where are you now?
I am a chat with the various links and the POG competencies on the page, but the links are there first, so I'm, so I which I go to the last, the bottom of the three links.
Yes, sir.
And that ta, okay, that looks, that looks better.
And at the top of the page, it should say Portrait of a Graduate. And then checklist, competencies of the graduate.
And then, I'm still going, I'm still going around in circle.
Okay, no problem.
On a dark screen.
Mine take a minute to load up, mine took a while to load up the the file, the PDF file.
Okay, that may be what's happening with mine.
Here's another question, are you using Google Chrome? For your your web browser?
No.
That may be it. Honestly, it shouldn't shouldn't matter, but that may be it, so if you have Google Chrome on your computer, I'd use that one instead of Internet Explorer.
So what I could do too, Roger, I could send you the link to the email, so you can do it after the meeting as well, if you're not able to do it within five-minute time, I could send you the link.
Okay, all right, that's fine, yeah, because I'm still loading. And I I've got Firefox, but I don't have Google Prime on my computer.
Okay. But that's that's an issue, right? Because I don't think everyone has Google Chrome, so we we need to think about that as well. Okay, I spared you the chimes that time, however, the the five minutes is finished. Just for sake of time, I do wanna um here, if if you all could just go through, and I'll I'll call you name by name, and just see what is your top one competency, and I'll start with Mr. Bunker.
I know you won't, cuz I'm not on.
Well, I know you weren't able to do the, the actual, uh, survey, but as you look at this thirty, this list.
I, I don't have the checklist.
Oh, you can't even see this?
No, I'm still, I'm still loading.
Oh, it's still a black screen. I mean, a black screen view. Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Wright, what was your top number one? You're muted.
All right, um, I would say communication.
Okay, and why?
I feel like the kids nowadays are so used to so much like social media, texting, emailing, that they don't do much face-to-face communication, that they lack a lot of the basic skills.
Absolutely, absolutely. It, it's just a different way to communicate, and I don't think the whole system has caught up with it. And it's not, it doesn't seem to be as in-depth, right? Like, we're not looking for shades of meaning in words. It's just like, how things go good, as opposed to really explaining what you mean. Um, absolutely, absolutely. Um, Officer Wilkins?
Um, I'd say critical thinking, and reason for that is now there's so much, you know, especially Google and technology, that nobody really thinks it's just relying on other people's ideas or what happens, you know, not saying that you don't use the tools, but I don't think kids are really like critically thinking.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's a, a movie out that I would encourage all of you to go see, which is called The Social Dilemma. It's on Netflix, and basically it talks about how our technology, uh, is, is swaying us one way or another. And so, you know, we can be made to feel or think a certain way based on, um, what technology says, right? What our phone, phones tell us to do, what social media tells us. As opposed to really thinking critically about, you know, the messages that are shared with us. Absolutely. This is Ward.
Well, they took both of mine, right? The communication was definitely my first one, so I'll, I'll say empathy, cuz that was another one that stood out to me. I think because you can hide behind, um, our computers and our phones, we tend not to think about how people may feel or be have a sense of any type of understanding around what the others, those around us are feeling or could experience as a result of our actions, and so um, that would have been my third, so communication and critical thinking were my, um, first two, and then empathy would be the next one I was thinking of.
Absolutely, absolutely. A lot of times we don't think about how others feel, right? It's just a matter of me and mine, and especially in like a capitalist, uh, society. It's like, hey, you know, as long as I get mine, you know, then, then we're gonna be okay, so absolutely. Uh, Mr. Cologne?
Well, gosh, my number one was empathy, so I'm kinda right behind Donna on that one. Um, you know, as we start to see some of the things that are going on in the world today, right? Coming out of COVID and some of the stuff that happened last year. Um, you know, just a, a lack of our caring about other people and, and, you know, the, the ability to just sit down and listen and then speak. And then be able to walk away from that with, you know, I mean, I mean, I'd agree, but, you know, at least we talked it through. Right? You don't necessarily have to agree on everything, but you need to be willing to understand. And accept that other people are gonna have different opinions from, uh, of, than yours, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I like what you said, um, about empathy, not only walking away with an idea, but then also doing something about, about that, right? Possibly changing your trajectory, your path, your way of doing things, um, based on how someone else might feel. And it's interesting that you would choose empathy first, um, and I could tell that you teach that in your home. Um, he's, he probably knows where I'm gonna go with this, but my daughter was a freshman on a cross-country team. His daughter was a senior on the cross-country team, and of course, you know, as a freshman, you struggle, you go through, uh, you know, you have a lot of anxiety about racing and all of that kind of stuff. I will never forget, my daughter was out there, and his daughter had finished the race, right? But then back to run with my daughter, right? And so, you know, understanding how she felt as a freshman, I'm sure she said, hey, let me go out and help this freshman to get through, so that's the kind of empathy, right? Not, not just, uh, the empathy that says, oh, yeah, you know what, they feel that way, but actually committing to action, right? Um, as he gave me the, the thumbs up. All right, and Ms. Camilla, how are you?
Hello.
Hello, hello. One thing I do like about this Zoom stuff and all that is that, uh, people are more expressive with their hands, right? It's like, what do I do with these?
Be careful with the hands there.
I could hear her, she was like, hello, right? All right, so let's continue.
Actually, I have, I, I have the list up, but I would throw in problem solving and responsibility.
Hmm, can you, can you elaborate?
Yeah, I think people, um, don't think about, you know, they just leap to conclusions, they don't really solve the problem, or they rely on somebody else to solve it for them. And I think there's another issue of people being responsible for their own actions and taking responsibility for helping out others, uh, and rather than just saying, oh, well, that's their problem.
Right, right, I agree. It's like we, we wanna, we wanna get the answer, right? Without necessarily going through the steps that it takes to problem solve, and so that's the kind of stuff that leads us to the wrong answer. I'm gonna, I'm gonna Google it, or I'm just gonna jump to a conclusion without really going through the steps methodically, you know? My father was one who, uh, my father doesn't have a college degree, he didn't graduate. Um, he's one of the smartest people I know, one of the, you know, because he goes through every single detail. Right? And, uh, he's, he's a, an, an Air Force guy, and every, he like every single detail, you know, whereas with us, like, oh, okay, got it done. It's like, no, 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 go back. Think about exactly why you did this, so that later on, when we encounter situations, it's like, okay, I know exactly why I'm doing this. Not just, just what I'm doing, and that, that's problem solving. Absolutely, absolutely. I wanna share with you all a video of low public schools, low public schools went through the same activity that, that we are going through now. And they came up with a video around Portrait of a Graduate. So, here we go.
Writing's not that easy, but.
This, that's not, this is an advertisement, just to let you know.
Grammarly can help. This sentence is grammatically correct.
Over the past twelve months, we have asked our community, what values, knowledge, skills, and work are habits do our students need to thrive after graduation? Here's what we've heard.
We want our students to graduate with the imagination, the skill set, and the adaptability to succeed.
We want our students to thrive as.
Creators, entrepreneurs, and leaders in today's complex world.
Our students don't just learn at school, they learn at home, in the community, and in the workplace.
Collectively, we want lower graduates to be strong of mind, heart, and.
All right, so just a pause. You see here, this is what they selected as their competencies. They talked about the mind, the heart, spirit. Uh, I can't see what number four is, but the network and leadership. And so this is, and then they have that all around a ship, a spaceship that they have, uh, leaping off. With ours, it's gonna look, uh, a little bit different, but it is one to include all of the competencies that, that you all select.
Spirit, skilled for the real world, and ready to engage with others to make positive change. How will we get there? Students, families, and community members identify three focus areas to make this a reality. Ensure all students are treated fairly, their voices are heard, and they have access to opportunities to thrive in the classroom. Create a roadmap for courses, internships, and real-world experiences for students to launch their future. And break down walls between school and community, so our students are exposed to new and innovative learning.
We want your involvement, your expertise, and your passion. As parents, employers, public officials, or community members, you know best what our graduates of today need.
As a community, we are all deeply invested in the success of our graduates. Help us create a new vision of learning that truly represents our community values.
Share your feedbacks, so we can put this portrait into action for our young people.
All right, so that is an example of what a Portrait of a Graduate video, um, and, and you also saw the diagram that they have, uh, what, what it would look like. Uh, do you all hear that? I'm sorry, I was, uh, sitting here and some music came on, um, from the next video in the queue. Uh, however, are there any questions that you all have of me around Portrait of a Graduate? I'll try to answer as, as best I can.
I just have a quick question around the competencies. Are those, so you're taking the, um, surveys to look to see what are the common ones? And what's the maximum amount that the, that we'll be looking at?
Prioritizing. Yeah, so there is a, uh, there is a program that we have called Qualtrics. And I actually see if I can show you what, what it looks like, so that you get the opportunity to see what all of your responses look like in a, in a, uh, tabulated form. Um, and so what we, what we're doing is looking at every response that was, that was given, so let me show you really quickly. All right, can you all see that?
Yes, sir.
All right, so here you have, move this out of the way. From. Okay, I found reopening Portrait of a Graduate. All right, so we could see, like, how many students we had respond, how many non-certified staff members, certified staff members. Uh, and then as well, the school affiliation. And then so out of student responses, we can see that the student said, out of two-hundred-and-thirty-three students who did respond to this, um, we see that they really wanna be successful, right? And so, um, we also looked at the, the raw data that they, that they shared, right? What are some hopes and dreams? Hopes and dreams, uh, to go to college, be a professional football player. Um, my dream is to graduate, to be happy and productive, right? Uh, to be in the NFL or be a CEO, and all of those words are in here somewhere. But it seems like the majority of our students, they wanna be successful. If we look at our families, pretty much the same thing, right? We do see that they have, um, life is large. Um, but successful jumps out at us as well, right? And so, and then from, from the community, we see community is there, but then we also see successful. So we get to see in, in these particular, um, data, we get to see exactly, you know, what folks are saying. And then with regard to skills and habits of mind, we see something similar. All right, so we see good, we see practice, we see college, and so we can tabulate this data. Um, uh, these data, I should say, um, in order to come up with our top fifteen. And then those fifteen will be included in a Portrait of a Grad- Graduate Design Sketch.
Thank you. That's great.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a way, as a community, and I'm very, very excited about it, because it really does give community input into the school system, right? Um, we all know that, that everything is tied to the schools, whether or not people move to this town is tied to the schools. Our taxes are tied to the schools, the future of our towns, the future of our people, right? Is tied to the school, so it's very, very important that we all have, have input. And not just, uh, when something happens, but proactively, right? And jumping out there and saying, hey, this is what we really want our schools to look like, this is what we want our schools to be. Um, and I think it's, is, is a really, really proactive approach, um, a positive approach um, that engages, you know, stakeholders, and then folks who one day may employ our, our student or, uh, may give our students insight into, you know, entrepreneurial, right? And starting their own things and, and all of that kind of stuff, so it's really, I, I'm loving this, um, this approach to shaping our schools, um, and impacting our town. Sorry, any other questions? All right, well, I wanna thank you all for, for having me and letting me be a part of your, your meeting for this portion. Um, as I said earlier, you know, I'm gonna, um, step off a little bit earlier. But, uh, but please keep doing the work that you all are doing. Uh, as I, you know, look around the, the chat, I see, you know, very, very familiar faces, which says to me that you all are engaged and involved. Um, you know, it's funny when I hear about somebody like running for office or something like that, I'm like, I don't know who they are, right? Um, but, but with you all, I know who you all are, and that means that you're involved. Um, and so on behalf of Bloomfield Public Schools, on behalf of my family, um, and just to being a community member, thank you all so much. Keep doing the good work you're doing.
Thank you so much for coming. Have a great night. We appreciate the presentation. Hi. Well, that was awesome.
Yeah, it's a lot to take in.
Mm-hmm. I love the approach.
Yeah, very data, data. Very inclusive.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, which is great.
Right. Awesome. Hello, Camilla.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, I'm a little tardy for the party.
Perfect time. Okay, so.
Pull up the, um, minutes to quickly review the, the agenda.
Okay.
We save some time, we can just, you've already read them, we can just vote on if there's any changes that need to be made, or corrections, modifications.
Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I don't think I can make the motion.
I wasn't present, so.
Yeah.
It leaves you, Roger. No pressure, no pressure at all.
I, I, I'm not used to four pages of minutes. We usually get about a page and a half. Uh, so, you know, on, on that basis, I'll move acceptance of the minutes as presented. But Hector, you've made motions in the past. I mean, you're, you're getting more, you're getting more into Rogers Rules of Order.
Well, I, I actually put them together, so I don't know if I can make the motion to, to approve the meeting, not minutes, excuse me.
You can second.
Okay, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. There we go, we're all set with the minutes from the May meeting. I mean, it's, yeah, May meeting, it's June, goodness gracious. All right, so I have the agenda on my phone, so I can look at that, so we have the minutes approved. We've already done the Portrait of a Graduate presentation. It looks like we're now at the summer youth employment.
So for summer youth employment, we have screened the applicants that are eligible for, um, the requirements, and we have interview schedule, we have four dates scheduled for interviews. June second, June third, June eighth, and June fourteenth. We have about sixty applicants that will be interviewed between those four days. We do have twenty-four slots that we were provided pending our funding. We'll get a finalized budget closer towards the start date, hopefully, um, usually towards the end of June, they give us our final contract, which tells us how many definite slots that we have for some youth employment. The way it's broken down, we have our fourteen and fifteen-year-olds, twelve slots. They're doing the instructional learning piece that will be in-house at three-thirty Park Avenue for the twenty hours for the six weeks. And then the other section they call the tier three are the actual students sixteen to seventeen that will be actually placed at work site. And they do the same hundred-twenty hours for the six weeks. We do have, um, most of our work sites lined up in place. We have a few town departments, and we're working to see which outside departments, outside businesses that we can get to participate. We're just gonna keep it to about two, probably two, no more than three of the outside ones, since this is our first year, having outside providers that are not in the town department for summer youth employment, so it's moving along quickly. The start date will be July sixth for the kids to start the program.
Great. Any questions on that from anyone? All right, we'll move to Youth Services update. Alright, we'll move to youth services update.
Services, for youth services, I didn't put together finalized the spreadsheet. In terms of updates, all of our programs have ended for May. We just have our current foster care program that have, um, actual scheduled activities for the month of June. We're in transition for the summertime, so we're finalizing our summer programs, summer activities. Including our summer youth employment for the summertime, so all of our focus would be in terms of getting that program up and running. We do plan on having one week for the CSI group for this summer as well. Um, based on staffing, staffing and the schedule with summer youth employment. We might have a few summer fun Fridays where we can do a few in-person activities with kids throughout the summer as well.
Angelica, are we still limited from a, from a, like a COVID standpoint, like we can only have so many participants?
We are still, I don't know how to describe it, we, for spacing wise, we, we're still keeping some distancing with our program spacing for our rooms. So we, we still don't have a huge, large influx that would be with the comedy in-house. And also we do have programming throughout the whole building, so space is limited for us. So right now, we're primarily working with our, um, guest room space. And then coordinating with the great room with the existing departments to see which place is free to have a larger type of booth.
Fair enough, no objection to that, I just was trying to get a sense as to, uh, you know, how was, how that was kind of transpiring. Are we using the courtyard space at all? I, I noticed last time I was in there, there were a lot of picnic tables and, and things like that, I assume it's for the seniors, but are we using that space at all?
Um, we do plan on using it, we did try to use it for, um, one activity, but it was actually, um. Too much sun that day, uh, the difficult part, it gets so hot, out there it is not enough, um, coverage. So the best time to use is when the sun is not super hot and blazing, because it's really, um. Uncomfortable and blinding out there with the white concrete, but, um, we do have access to it. To use, to use it, I'm trying to find ways that we can utilize that space more, because right now it's kind of a vacant open spot. That isn't really being utilized as best as it can be.
Gotcha, thank you.
And there's a tent outside of the building too. But there's a lot of competition for that space, you know, between the three departments.
Well, it's right outside that, is the senior center on the other side of the building or?
Well, they're, they, uh, yes and no, their office is on the other side of the building, but their cafe is off of that area where the tent is. And so they've been doing exercise classes out there. Um, they plan on when they start back their lunch program, um, using that outdoor area. Um, so our bill, town buildings are fully open to the public right now. Um, we are requesting that people continue to wear masks while in the building. Um, we are in three thirty Park Avenue. Um, we are not opening our space to rentals to the public, um, only for town functions. Hopefully in the fall, depending on where things are, we'll be able to allow people to utilize or to rent, um, space in our building. Um, town meetings are still via Zoom, they're not in person as of yet. So hopefully there will be a plan in place to meet in person and be fully open to the public. Um, so we are beginning the transition, um, with the changes that the governor put in place. Two weeks ago at this point, I think, or a week and a half ago, May nineteenth.
Fair enough, thank you.
Before we go on to new business, uh, how did the graduation go?
For the graduation, we have, um, all of the kids that are ready to go for gyms. And for, um, Bloomford Public Schools as well, on that both of, BHS. The distribution date is planned for June fifteenth, I'm just waiting for a confirmation of time that we can deliver the kits. So we have, um, the bags with the blankets and some other items inside for, um. Giving them for our graduation, so we have all of those, we have anticipated a hundred twenty to distribute for the high school. And there were about five, five other gym students. And I do have extras on hand, I was working with, um, Kishma to get, uh, though, I don't have like exact list of how many are. Bloomford residents that don't attend Bloomford Public Schools, but I do have extra ones that I can put together to provide. Once I get a finalized number of that, those students.
Thank you.
Onto new business?
For the twenty twenty-one meeting schedule. I was thinking for, for the fall, we do have our once a month meetings. I was wondering if we can, um, if, if, if we want to plan on continuing to keep our monthly meetings, or do we want to move them to, um, bi-monthly meetings? I did also put together the schedules a little bit earlier, but I did also put together a schedule for the twenty twenty-two calendar year as well. I guess as a group, we can decide, do monthly, are monthly meetings beneficial, or do we want to start with bi-monthly meetings? With the same time slot, Tuesday, six to seven thirty. If we need to come back to in the fall, because we do have from September through December, our monthly meetings that are already approved. And planned for the end of this, end of this year.
I, I do think it would be helpful to have more board members to weigh in on that, unless, we could always do that through an email as well, right? We're not meeting in July and August, we have our September meeting, we could finalize that in between now and then maybe allow the other board members to weigh in. But if those that are here today, if you guys have, um, some thoughts around that, certainly feel free to share them.
I guess my.
You can also table. As I say, you can table to vote on it till September, maybe, um, have discussion today and maybe wait to vote on it in September. Put it out to the other board members since we don't have many.
Right.
I guess my bias is monthly, because if you would go every two months, it just gets too separated. And, and there are things that are going on, um, it's not like we don't, you guys don't do anything.
I would have to agree with Roger, I think there's, I think the activity that, that you guys do is, is something that needs to be discussed once, you know, at least once a month. Um, there are times of the year where it tends to get, be a little slow, but more often than not, you guys are, are busy there. Um, so I would prefer the, the monthly meetings.
I'm in agreement as well, but we could certainly hear from the other, uh, members.
I, um, I had a conversation with Angelica about that, because I know everyone's schedules are full. And I know sometimes we don't have a lot of members that are present. So not sure if doing bi-monthly would mean more members would attend regularly. Um, I know there's one, um, town council committee, the community services committee, they meet quarterly actually now. No, they meet bi-monthly, I'm sorry, um, they meet bi-monthly, and that was, um, the only reason why, um, we mentioned suggest, suggesting that. Um, because that may mean we could have more involvement, but whatever you all decide is fine with us.
Yeah, my only comment to that is that we've always seemed to have that issue. Seems like, uh, you know, attendance has always kind of been a thing, uh, unfortunately. To the point where I think we even wrote it in the, the bylaws when we updated it, that, you know, you could only miss so many meetings a year, uh, before you kind of move on. But I, I'm, I think we should table it, I think we should all sit on it a little bit. I, I still, I found it hard personally, then I'm gonna change my mind, it should be anything but monthly, um, but.
We love to see you every month.
Oh, well, please.
Even with your video off.
I just want to see how he's gonna disappear when we go back to in-person meetings.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be by the snack table, that's how I'll disappear.
You're usually there.
Yeah, I am usually there, that is true, so, but yeah, that's definitely something that we should probably table till September.
And with the uniqueness of COVID and, you know, people's schedules being not quite the same. That maybe now might not be the best time for us to make that decision. We certainly have the discussion in the fall and see if maybe people's schedule opens up a little bit more for them to be more available. So we can table that, we'll table that until our September meeting.
Yeah, just make sure it shows that it, it appears in the minute so that people hopefully give some thought to it before we get together.
Right. And as I said earlier, we, we've been able to sometimes send those things out in an email so that folks could start to at least prepare their thoughts, what their thoughts are. And, um, be more prepared for the September meeting to, for us to make a final decision.
Sounds fair, that's good.
Did we have as much issue when we were meeting in person, a- as far as membership, uh, attend, attendance? I seem to think we had more people.
The past couple of years we have, Roger, it, we don't have a problem with, with town staff.
Right.
This is just my opinion at this point, but I think we do have an issue with, uh, you know, I, I guess not just the frequency, but I guess that the consistency is what I, I guess I'd. You know, people being able to attend, we will get the occasional new person from here to here. Uh, but at the same time, it's just the consistency of the attendance, I think, is what I'm, I guess I, I look for. Always welcome new people, but I'd like them to, to be there to, to kind of, you know, finish it out, right? Make a, make a statement, make a, an opinion about something and then kind of walk away from it and then not, you know, kind of. Whatever their issue is dies because they took it with them. And I, maybe that's not the best way to say it, but that's, I mean, let's be honest, that's kind of what happens.
Well, I mean, the faces I see here are the faces I usually see. Except for Hector's, his face I never see.
I cannot win, oh, I don't have pretty pictures behind me like Donna, I don't have my own, my own art room in the back there, so. Although I have to say, I've been looking at that Jay-Z picture pretty close, that is impressive, Donna, impressive.
Moving right along, thank you, Hector.
You can do virtual backgrounds, Hector.
I know, I know, one day.
When we go back to in-person, he'll get the virtual background.
Yeah.
More than likely.
Alright, we all set with the meeting schedule, tabling that until our September meeting. And then next, we have the funding for youth service program.
So this funding was brought up, uh, mentioned at the end of our last meeting by, um, town council member, Rickford. And, um, currently we, we have funding for youth services, I'm not sure if there was some new funding that was gonna come through. That we can gain, um, additional programming from.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Angelica.
But as of what we currently have for funding, we have pretty much a lot of our grants that we have for a couple of years now. That have been pretty secure and steady.
So I think that, go ahead, Hector.
I was gonna just say, for, for those who weren't on the call, and I think it might have been, um, Officer Wilkins and, um, Donna at the last meeting. Basically, um, Councilman Rickford, um, Kirkton came and, and said there, there might be an opportunity. Uh, to use some funding from the American Rescue Act, which was, um, recently signed into law. And we might be able to benefit from that in some way, and when I say we, I mean the town. So what he, what he suggested at the time, because we were talking a lot about the programming, and Angelica, let me know if I'm wrong, and Camilla, let me know if I'm misstating something. But basically what he said, you know, he'd like for us to prepare as a group, um, you know, just some thoughts, right? Brainstorm as to what additional items we'd like to do. And, you know, whether or not there'd be some funding dollars available to it, when the time comes. Nothing's been decided, nothing has been presented, nothing has been said, we'll get this. But there is an anticipation that there's going to be this ask of, you know, of, here's, here's what we can give to the town. And then everybody's gonna come, well, I want to use it for this, I want to use it for that. He wants us to be ready as a group to say, okay, here's what we'd like to do. Uh, and then, you know, kind of it gets thrown into the pile with everyone else, and they decide how to kind of divvy up that money.
Right.
And do we have any idea when that time will come?
Right.
We don't, we don't know when the money will trickle down to the, from the state to the municipalities. And in what way, how we will access that funding, how much we'll get. What are, we really don't know all of the parameters around the use of the funding, so, um.
I guess my concern is we're not gonna meet again until September.
Right.
Well, we can always call a special meeting.
I think once we have an idea of a little, a little more concrete information is to when.
Right.
Possibly how much, I think, but I think putting the idea out there now, starting to think about it is important. Because I haven't thought, I have not personally not thought about it since May.
Would you all be open to a special meeting in, um, I don't know, that would be sometime this month or July?
No, we don't know when.
Once we know more information?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and that will be the only thing on the agenda.
Okay.
So in the meantime, let's just kind of think about some wish lists, right? Personal wish lists as to what we'd like to see, and, you know, when that time comes, you know, we could all get together and we kind of throw our top five in, right? And then we're gonna decide which ones we want to pick from every, all the top five of everybody or something of that nature, but. Um, as far as I'm concerned, right, no ask is too big. Whatever it is, make the suggestion, the worst that can happen is that it said no, we can't do it.
So once in a lifetime opportunity.
Exactly, yeah, don't be shy about saying, you know, saying I want this, right?
This is not a side group, so I don't think.
No, not at all.
Agreed.
Okay, great. So we'll be prepared to hear from you, um, in the event that something does come through, so that we, um. We'll have an emergency meeting over the summer, in our non-meeting months, in order to come together to, um, solidify some, uh, ideas that we have. That we'd like, um, to share.
Sounds good.
So Donna, can, can you or Hector just send out an email to the people who aren't here? And so that they, you know, let them know what's going on, maybe let them think about, see if they think about it.
Yes, we will work, Hector and I will work on that with Angelica.
Okay, great.
That's a good idea, Roger, thank you. Alright, announcement, any announcements that folks?
I have two, I have two questions. One is, when will we see Angelica again?
Yes, so, um, I will be anticipated to be out through the fall. Um, that's like, I'm like, yeah, I'm just saying to be out through the fall, so the way I have it planned out, January. But we'll see how the dates align, what that date is either in the December or January. So, um, that is the plan for the fall for myself.
Oh, nice, congrats.
Yeah, I think, yeah, congratulations, best wishes, and, you know. And, and, you know, when it happens, let us know.
Yeah, I will, I'll make sure I send messages and photos.
My, my second question might be a bit more controversial, but I did ask the question, um, I think to Camilla or somebody. Uh, has youth adult council, well, maybe it was Angelica, has youth adult council ever looked at the issue of policing in schools? Uh, and the reason that comes up is Chris Murphy wrote an editorial in the, in the Current. Uh, it was, uh, which school was it that went on, the, the kids walked out on the issue? And it came up, I think, from the Child Advocates Office a couple of months ago. I'm just wondering if we ever looked at it as, as, as an issue that, uh, we should have some idea about.
I don't remember that ever be outside of hearing the reports from, um, Officer Wilkins. Or, um, whoever's on the youth adult council in terms of the, um, school, uh, police, um, who are in the schools. The youth adult council has never taken on an active role in advocating or, um, anything of the such. With policing in the schools, um, I don't know if Officer Wilkins has an update on what that will look like in the fall.
Um, so, nothing has changed as far as I know, however, we are short-staffed. So there is no officers currently assigned to any of the schools. But, um, as far as I know, we still have, or will still have school resource officers unless something changes. But nothing has changed as yet. But nothing has changed as yet.
Has, has anything changed as far, I mean, I guess one of the issues that comes up is um my, my experience is that when schools cut staff, they tend to cut guidance, social workers, uh, non-teaching staff. Uh, and particularly coming back from COVID. Um, I think there's going to be a lot of social emotional issues out there for some of our kids. Uh, I'm just wondering, you know, it's not a police department issue. It's just, yeah, I'm just concerned about how we address that given the particular circumstances of COVID. But I also wonder if we've ever asked parent, if the, if we, the larger we, not necessarily youth adult council, has ever asked parents and students for their input on on the subject. Uh, again, because it seems to be getting more attention nationally now than it used to. So just some thoughts out there. I and I'm not suggesting, I mean, I sit on the, I sit on the juvenile review board. I have no problem with the officers that I have dealt with uh, who who are involved in the schools. Uh, I, but I think it's a larger issue that maybe we should think about sometime.
Yeah, so let me just comment on that really quick as a parent, um, Roger. I have not heard of of any kind of uh, you know, soliciting of feedback from parents regarding uh, police inside the schools. Uh, I think generally speaking, at least on the parents that I've kind of spoken to, they've been supportive of the school resources, officers when they are in the schools um, here in the town. So to go back to the original question again, I've never been asked to comment or or provide any feedback on this, the, the um officers in the school. You do bring up a good point, uh, and I think we've kind of said this over the past few meetings, maybe probably a little over a year that, you know, I think the two are kind of intertwined, meaning policing in the school and then the mental health of our students in those schools. Um, I have been probably not as successful or loud about saying, maybe I have been, I don't know, my own opinions, I feel like I haven't been about stressing that we need to to get away from focus of, of, you know, kind of re-establish our focus towards mental health. Um, and mental health at a a much younger level than just the high school, right? At maybe fifth, sixth. Maybe now e- even, you know, at our elementary level. You know, when you consider some of the stuff associated with COVID nineteen, the fact that people have been kind of isolated um, in the fear of what happens when people start to get together again. Um, so yeah, as opposed to, you know, as opposed to saying, let's say, let's get some type of survey together to figure out how people, you know, can comment towards, you know, how they feel about policing in the schools, because I think that is a, a that is a potential matchbox. Because you'll get a lot of people that avoid the issue as opposed to try to speak to how they feel about just police in general. I'd like this to kind of figure out how we can, you know, develop or maybe even implement some mental health programs within what we already do that can be supportive of of, you know, both sides, the school, the students and the police.
So I know um, Bloomfield Public Schools has um, been doing um or addressing mental health issues with uh, students um, throughout the pandemic. Uh, virtually, the Zoom, the social workers and all of those support services have been really supportive of families and children. So I think before as a group, we decide, uh, you know, what plans we want to put in place. I think in all fairness, we would need um, the Board of Education to be present on one of these calls, so they can kind of go a little more in-depth in terms of how they're addressing the mental health issues. Um, I do know that they are. I don't know all of the particulars and details, but they have been very active um, throughout the pandemic.
Yeah, listening to Hector, you know, the the other concern I have is raising that issue at this point in time when I think a number of people in the policing profession feel that they're being targeted. Uh, it's probably not a good time to to start delving into that if there's no, if there's no immediate issue, which I don't think there is in our schools. It's, it's just that it's out there. Uh, but I think the mental health approach makes a lot, is 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 much less uh, I don't know, chat, yeah, much as challenging and makes a lot of, and is a lot of sense for what our kid, for what our kids need.
Yeah, there's definitely been a lot of negative, you know, people. It's so easy to just sit on top of something and just yell to the high heaven about how they feel about something as opposed to trying to bring something meaningful to the table. So I think this group as a whole is supportive of of, you know, our our town department. Including all the officers and and everyone that worked there. So I just don't want to go down that right, route, route right now. I just, I fear the kind of feedback you would get, it wouldn't be necessarily productive.
Okay. Any other announcements?
I did want to just mention, um, I know um, it was mentioned last month that the Juneteenth celebration for the town of Bloomfield will be Saturday, June nineteenth at um three thirty Park Avenue with the unveiling of a mural on the west, the northwest side of the building down near the gym. You may have seen an article, um, I believe there was an article in the Bloomfield Messenger about that. Uh, there, throughout the greater Hartford area, there are MLK murals that are popping up. There was one in West Hartford um, just outside of West Hartford Center and in in the city of Hartford and some other communities and Bloomfield was selected. Uh, so that will be Saturday, June nineteenth. Yeah, for, we can make, we'll make sure we have additional, all the details that we'll include in the minutes uh, with the time. And then that following weekend is Celebrate Bloomfield. Uh, there's lots of activities, the Mayor's Ball, the pop-up uh, vendors on the town green that Saturday. Uh, there's uh, youth and family events that will go on that Friday at uh, three thirty Park Avenue. I believe there's some trail walks being scheduled or bike rides um, with the Actagon Bike Club. So i- if you look in the Bloomfield Messenger and also on the town website, you'll see information about all of those great programs that are coming up this month.
Great. Thank you, Camilla. We have about seven minutes. I don't believe we have any, we don't have any public folks to give any comments, but anything else that we need to tackle before we uh, adjourn our meeting?
I just want to say thank you all for your ongoing support. I don't think we can say enough what you all mean to us as a department over the years. Um, it's just great to, for, to know that you all have our back. Um, you know, you support us, you advocate for us, you make sure the community knows about all the great things that the department's doing. And I salute you all for your dedication and and commitment uh, with all that's been going on through the pandemic. You all have been there. You always have great ideas and suggestions and um, I really do appreciate each of you. And um, looking forward to continuing our work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to second that too. It's been great, the support from beginning to now and actually I'm starting to see more departments starting to realize what youth services does. Um, I get many phone calls in terms of partnering with the school district for different um activities they may have scheduled. So slowly but surely, they're starting to learn about youth services and part of that is part of all you guys advocating like, this is what youth services does, this is where to find contacts. So they've been finding me. It's just a matter of, you know, what commitments we can do with staffing, what we currently have for programming, but I have seen the influx of the school, the different schools calling to reach out to principals directly, even the Board of Ed for some things to um collaborate and partner, partner with for with services. So I'm always excited about that. We um we're just gonna just keep on going and see where it takes us.
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll take our credit for it, but I think you have to look at the leadership of uh, youth services.
I agree. Yeah.
The team effort.
Yep. Perfect collaboration.
Time that they're reaching out. We've said it for years, the hidden gem.
Yeah, sometimes it it comes a lot like, gosh, who else was, like, we can't do everything. It's a great idea, but like we already got this going on. We're already over here, but you know.
Problem to have, I'll tell you that.
It is. It really is.
We kindly have, we have meetings to say at this time, we're not able to do this partnership in the future, you know, just in mind and I know they're gonna call us. It'll be always another project, always another partnership, but um, we keep our doors, doors open and try to at least connect as much as we can with all the different schools. And some of the schools have been from elementary all the way to high school and middle school, so for a vet. So I've had elementary, middle school, high school, for a vet. They're finding me. I wanted to know what youth services can do to help.
That is awesome.
That's great.
I'll move we adjourn on that note. Is that the only one who can move?
Yeah.
I'll, I make a motion that we adjourn uh, tonight's meeting.
Everybody in agreement? Great to see everyone.
Happy summer.
Yes, happy summer.
We'll be meeting soon.
Yes.
Be safe, everyone.